In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. So first item on the list then is our consent agenda. I'm sorry, two. Anybody have anything they want to present to the council?
Hello, Brandon Ebert, 9157 Burns Parkway. I think you already know how I feel about the Cars/Greenwald Property COP. I just want to reinforce that I'm opposed to it. I'd also welcome anyone here that is not on record for speaking on any of the agenda items to please come speak now. And I was looking forward to watching the YouTube video of that P&amp;Z meeting and it never got uploaded and I was told it was technical difficulties and that it was pretty low priority to resolve those technical difficulties. So maybe make it a lower higher priority in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And to correct, I think it's maybe misrepresentation to say low priority, but with the elections we have and because of the, what it's taking, the people who are asking to fix the system are not the people who we bought it from and installed it. So it's a little more challenging and we've been obviously with the elections, that's been our primary concern right now. So it's not that it's a low priority, but it's just below some of the hotter things right now. We are trying to figure out what's been happening with the technical side of things so that we can, because it's also something that's valuable to the council if they can't make it to the meetings. So we do appreciate the value of it in the council and we know it's valuable to the residents. The staff is doing what they can to remedy it so we don't have a problem in the future. Anybody else that'd like to speak?
Hello, my name is Evan Amundson with Cars Tree Service and I just had a couple of things to follow up from the Planning and Zoning Commission that I'd like to talk to you guys about. First of all, I've done this before with city councils and my latest one being Alexandria, which we were able to rezone a property and create a satellite division for Cars Tree Service. And some of those pictures were in the original document that was submitted to Planning and Zoning Committee. I didn't feel like there was any dialogue. There was a, basically, I came up and said my part, some residents came up and said what they didn't like about it and it was like, alright, let's vote on it. There was no opportunity for a resolution to any of the said concerns, one of them being pesticides. And pesticides and how they break down in a tree are not an issue. Once they've been absorbed into that tree, they're already being used up by the tree. So as far as storing material at a site, it's very limited as far as the actual number of people that are utilizing pesticides or herbicides. Currently, it's a cornfield, so it's getting quite a bit of pesticides, herbicides, as well as fungicides. So the pesticides is just, it's a non-issue for trees. It's brush, it's trees, it's trees that you'd have in your backyard that, you know, need to get trimmed away from the power line. So pesticides is a non-issue. Disease and insect, again, I just drove around now then before we came to the meeting and there was an oak wilt tree right over here and a Dutch elm tree all within a mile of this area. The invasive species and disease and insect is something that we're going to have to deal with because it's here. So if you want to save your tree, there's treatments for that, but as far as disease and insect and that being an issue with storing materials, brush and logs, not an issue. Another issue that was brought up was nuisances with brush, vermin, fire. Again, with my satellite locations in other areas, we've seen an increase of pheasants, an increase of turkeys, deer coming, and check it out, there's usually crab apple trees that are getting nipped, so birds are coming in. As far as nuisance animals, I haven't had no skunks, I've had no raccoons or anything that's been a nuisance. And considering the site location was swamp and wetland completely surrounding it, there's plenty of places for critters to be living. They're not going to want to be in a bare parking lot with a brush pile there. Another concern that was brought up was grinding of debris. The grinding of the debris would be to keep the site neat and tidy. We don't want to keep everything onsite and just keep building more and more piles. It would be a storage facility for the brush and logs. They would be chipped up throughout the year, which, again, there was no discussion about putting conditions on that, sizes of the piles, lengths of the piles, durations that they could be stored there. There was no discussion and I just feel like due diligence in this case was presented that we're a utility looking for a conditional use permit and we're a utility, we're looking for a conditional use permit and all of these other things were not part of the true condition of the use, in my opinion. And so in your bylaws or writing, it does state that a utility is acceptable for a conditional use. And being that we're a utility, vegetation management utility, I feel like I'd like everybody here to consider letting Cars Tree Service utilize a site that has 8,000 vehicles already driving on it every single day with additional vehicles that are going to be added from that with the expansion over in Elk River. It's going to continue to get busier, it's going to continue to get wider hopefully so it's safer. That being said, our usage would be so minimal on that thing, it'd be less than what I saw driving down the road and seeing cars coming out of what appeared to be maybe rental units or just family, large families. So if you look at the request, actually, I think it's fairly minimal having, I think, up to 15 vehicles parked there. More than likely, it's going to be three or four vehicles parked there overnights, more of just a transfer station, not adversely disturbing the property. There was a fire concern, the concern with the fire, I believe, is a non-concern as well. Again, it's surrounded by water. It's going to be tilled black dirt, so where these piles are at, there's no way that a fire could get out. And for that matter, we don't intend on burning the pile. So we wouldn't want a fire, just like nobody else out there would want a fire. We'd have vehicles stored there and other things, so that's not part of what we want. So again, I just, I would just really appreciate some discussion amongst it and hopefully non-biased, because my understanding in speaking with lawyers is the conditional use permit, it's your job to decide whether or not we should be able to get the conditional use, not whether or not we're going to create noise, not whether or not we're going to have some vehicles in there, because yes, there is going to be noise, but one day out of a year, or three days out of a year, if there was some conditions set, we're more than reasonable. We're a professional company that's been around for 46 years and we want to do what's right and we feel like this would be the right spot for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who could be open mic here?
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name is John Anstrum. I have a farm just on 181st Avenue, just adjoining this property. Not exactly adjoining the property that's where the tree waste is, but my property adjoins the farm that this tree waste is being stored on. So my address is 8702 181st Avenue, which is Main Street of Elk River. And we get lots of traffic on that road. But I wanted to sop up tonight because I received a letter from Susan Gepfert. I'll give each one of you a copy. Tonight here, she's from Manoka County, environmental and help for the county of Manoka.
Thank you.
And you can follow along with some of the things.
Anybody? Can Heath put that on the back table, please?
Sure.
Anyhow, this is regarding for a tree waste compost site. A license would be needed from Manoka County and possibly from Minnesota State for a compost site. Even if Nalden approved this site, they still have to have state, federal, and other people approve the site. So anyhow, I'm not going to go through all 18 recommendations that they have just to speed up tonight, I don't want to take up the whole evening. But number six on the, of the 18, it says the licensee shall grant access to the county at any reasonable time for monitoring the operation and maintenance of the site. They have to have, the Manoka County agent has to come out once a month and write a report on everything that's going on. That hasn't ever been addressed. Number nine, the license shall not store compost or processed tree and yard waste with a, within 100 feet of any water surface. With the property having a ditch on the west end of the property that flows into my property and all the way down into Trot Brook and eventually to the Mississippi River and Minneapolis drinking water, it's considered Army Corps of Engineers protected water and that should be protected by us as well. And I believe that I, when I get my, when I had my property taken care of as far as for permitted with my condition to use permit, I had to get a permit from the Lower Rum River to get that clearance done because of the impact of a possible wetland violation. So I would imagine Upper Rum River Watershed Organization should also be notified of this and set up their quotas so that there be any impacts to the wetlands or the ditches from this operation that that's been addressed. But number 10 was license shall provide adequate security to prevent unauthorized dumping. That's a real problem I see. The license, number 11, the licensee shall provide on the following site, they need to have sanitary facilities and a shelter, they need fire protection equipment, emergency first aid kits, potable water, telephone, fire access.
Hey, John, thank you. At this point, you've used your time. We do have the list in front of us that we can look at. Did you give?
Well, I have a couple of other things I wanted to go if I could.
We do limit these to three minutes.
Pardon me?
We do limit this part of the meeting to three minutes.
Okay, let me go on. The big reason that I'm against with this.
Kevin, did you get a copy of this? John, do you have one more?
Pardon me?
Do you have another copy?
Yes, I do.
Give it to Evan.
Give it to representative from Cars here?
I'm starting hard of hearing, I apologize here, but anyhow, the, number 15 is they have to maintain an attendant on duty at the site at all times while it is open. There was never a discussion of having an attendant on site. If we don't have an attendant, we got a locked gate, we end up with the possibility like Elk River and several other compost sites where consumers, residents bring in brush, trees, they dump it in front of the gate. Alright, they dump it in front of the gate because nobody's there, they're not going to go home with it. And that is a real problem because, you know, it could be, let's look at the case.
Hey, John, we didn't hear this at the public hearing, so we're not going to redo the public hearing at this point, but we do appreciate the items that you brought to our attention in addition to what was brought up at the public hearing.
Okay.
But at this point, we do limit this portion of our meeting, the speakers, to three minutes.
Can I bring up later on in the meeting, some of the other items that I have?
No, this will be the only, the only time we have for open discussion. At this point, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
That was, that was the planning and zoning.
Okay, well, I have several other major things I have to bring up, so.
So that would be good to, in cases like this, put those in writing and give them to the council before the meeting so we have a chance to look at them.
All right. So that's it then?
Thank you. Just to reiterate, we did have a public hearing on this and that was the time to bring that up and as was said, that earlier tonight, that was the time for the give and take by the Planning Commission, they would make a recommendation to the council. It's also a time, if there are a number of residents, we've had at least three residents that had significant concerns, which they put in writing and sent to the council, so, and to the commission, so they had that opportunity. This is good information, it would have been good to have a public hearing and if you have additional information that would have been appropriate, that would be the time for it. But at this point, we're now in the business meeting of the council and so in the open floor items, it really is a time for three minutes to address things typically that aren't on the agenda for tonight. Our public hearing session really was during the P&amp;Z portion of it. But we will, if there's other people that have something to say again, in three minutes we would accept additional comments at this point. Like I said, typically, it's whatever you have on your mind, it's not already on the agenda, but in this case, if it's on the agenda, we will accept it within three minutes. Anything else on the public hearing? I'm sorry, for the open mic, it's not a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Alan Greenwald. The address is 4741 153rd Avenue Northwest in Ramsey and I'm the owner of this property. I'm hoping that you can extend the period that you have to make decisions on this. I understand several other people here have had voice concerns in the prior meeting and just like Kevin was saying, it didn't seem like there was much of a constructive dialogue. It was, you know, say what you want and this is the decision that we're going to make and there was no other recourse at all. With that said, I think like Mr. Anstrum said, there was more that he wanted to say and couldn't say it tonight. So maybe in another meeting to give him another three minutes or anyone else another three minutes to talk. And you guys have a little more time to make a better decision instead of a rushed decision. So that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Evan. I live at 8873 181st Avenue and I know that you've talked about chipping the wood. Then you tell us it's going to go to St. Paul. Is it going to go to St. Paul and not to round us? And then you're going to have a parking lot and one little shed and a bunch of logs. Well, we could have a house there. We don't need all that. We don't need a parking lot. You know, we own a parking lot, we'll go someplace else and build a parking lot.
So the question to me?
Well, we're trying not to have a public hearing again tonight since the.
No concern with the witness being trapped here on the area.
Mr. Barr, I'm sorry. I'll step up again. If an individual that comes up here doesn't waste their three minutes, let's say they only talk for 30 seconds or a minute, can they pass that time to the next person?
No.
No, okay.
It's just a three-minute match, but it's not a guaranteed three-minute. Anybody else? All right, at that point, seeing and hearing no other comments, we will close the, over here, the opening mic part of this. And now we all move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ryan. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
All right, so before we approve that, I just want to address, on the consent agenda tonight, if you don't have a agenda with you, the first item is three, approval of three previous meeting minutes, the July 9th regular council meeting, I'm sorry, June 9th, July 7th, public hearing on road projects for this summer and the council meeting, regular council meetings of July 14th. In addition, we have a financial report, we're approving a treasures report for the month and all claims dated July 8th through August 4th, 2020. We have an application for a permit for charitable gambling at the Burns Bottle Shop, a resolution establishing a policy allowing garage and accessory buildings to drain to daylight rather than to a septic system, pretty standard operation in cities of our makeup and well documented by our planner. And then we have a memo from the clerk, we hired a part-time, we would be hiring a part-time seasonal maintenance person to keep up with the projects in the park and in the public area. And those were discussed previously at a workshop and the details are in the, will be in the minutes with the approval of this consent agenda. Any other comments before we vote? So you hear none, all those in favor of the passing of the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Commander Heath and the sheriff report.
Good evening, everyone. Talking through the mask isn't a normal thing for me, so.
Yeah, it's not normal.
He probably can't even hear me.
I think it's normal, I'm going to get worried.
Yeah. Just, I wanted to give the city council and attendees an update on the calls for service and some activities in the, in now then for the month of July. If you saw the calls for service for July, we were up to 173 calls for service during the month, so again, another busy month in town. And I did want to bring up with some of those calls, we were at seven at Bar Nun, which is been in the general range where we've been, but on the topic of Bar Nun, I had forwarded an email to Lori this month. It looks like they're doing some changing as to what their business type is. Before, they had some residents there that were there via the Department of Human Services and Department of Corrections. It looks like they're shifting their type of programming to deal with, they're calling it shelter care services for youth from ages 12 to 17. And in reading the email, it wasn't in great depth about what they were going to be doing, but it is for some short-term shelter care and long-term residential and it does look for, look, appear as if it's going to be centered around mental health services. So it looks like they're moving away from the Department of Corrections type of stuff and focusing on the other avenues. I don't know what that means, I don't know if that's going to change any of the dynamics that we've seen, but I just wanted the council to be aware that there is a change ongoing there and we're going to have to just kind of wait and see as to how that looks in the future. As a, a few noteworthy.
Commander, do you know which state, Department of the state they would be answering to with this change?
I do not. At this point, there was no information on the program itself. I, just assuming when they talk about shelter care, that can range for a lot of, that can range from a lot of different things. It can be local counties that are doing that and they can do short and long-term placements, so I don't know. There was nothing in the email to indicate who they were working under and if these would be state-run programs or just local programs they were facilitating for other local counties or cities and stuff. So kind of a few unknowns.
Obviously, as you hear more, please keep us informed.
I will, I will. And I did, just a couple of interesting calls for the month. On the 24th of July, the sheriff's office, St. Francis Police, Nalden Fire, and a line of ambulance responded to a two-vehicle personal injury crash on Viking Boulevard just west of Highway 47. Both drivers were severely injured and one of the drivers was actually not breathing when law enforcement got there, despite the life-saving efforts of law enforcement, fire, rescue, and ambulance, that driver did die at the scene. The other driver involved had serious injuries and had to be extricated from the vehicle and they were then airlifted down to HCMC. So a pretty significant crash and it's one of those, it's a very tragic incident, but I wanted to point it out, you guys have heard me for years talk about sometimes people are just going about their day, minding their business and they get involved with a crash like this. The initial investigation appears that there was a passenger car that was traveling westbound on Viking Boulevard and a pickup truck that was traveling eastbound and it looks like the passenger car crossed over the center line and hit the truck head-on. And I only bring it up, first of all, it's a noteworthy incident that I think the council should be aware of, the efforts of their law enforcement and fire that they're out here doing, but it's just one of those things I remind people of. You know, the driver of that pickup truck who was injured severely and had to be extricated was just going about their day, had no idea what was, you know, that coming around the corner was a vehicle that was going to hit them head-on. So again, I bring it up to drive defensively, take your time, watch what's going on because unfortunately, there's things that happen with other people out there that you can't control. So be the best defensive driver you can and keep an eye on what's going on. We're very fortunate. We're very fortunate that that other driver, while injured severely, wasn't killed, because it was a very, very bad crash. So, just a, just another thing to point out to the council. And an interesting call, talking about the shelter services at Bar Nun. Juvenile female was being dropped off. She was going to be housed there by, I believe it was a local government agency. And while they were doing the intake and stuff, a male showed up in a vehicle. She got in that vehicle and left with them. And they were able to get a license plate numbers. Our staff ran the license plate. It was actually a stolen vehicle out of Minneapolis that had come up there to pick her up. Our deputy put out an attempt to locate on the vehicle, and a Ramsey officer found the vehicle at Bunker Lake Boulevard and Highway 47. They tried to stop the vehicle, as it was stolen and contained a habitual juvenile runaway. A pursuit happened. The vehicle wouldn't stop and actually accelerated and got away. And due to the safety concerns, the officers terminated the pursuit and didn't chase it. And a little while later, the Coon Rapids Police Department saw the vehicle out on Highway 10, tried to stop the vehicle again, and it fled from them as well. And it's a, they terminated the pursuit because of the danger to the public, because the vehicle was being driven erratically and things of that nature. And we're just, we're trying to limit the amount of danger we put the public with when we're out there, so our people are trying to do the best they can, and they're not going to chase these things. That investigation is ongoing regarding the stolen vehicle and the people involved. But just a, one of those crazy incidents that you, I wanted to bring to the council's attention for your information. And then deputies, along with Ramsey and Nelland Fire Department, responded to the 20900 block of Cleary Road northwest on some suspicious fires. When fire and law enforcement arrived, fire extinguished the multiple fires. There were actually four different fires on the property. And it was pretty obvious to those there that there was an arson suspected. One of the things that had been burning was a vehicle that was on the property. And fire contacted the Anoka County Fire Investigation Team, which is a conglomeration of different investigators from different fire agencies and law enforcement that come out. They specialize in these types of investigations. So there is an active arson investigation involving that case. Our criminal investigation division from the sheriff's office is working with the Anoka County Fire Investigation Team to continue that. They do have a suspect involved in that case, and they're going to continue to work on that, to see if they can bring that forward for presentation to the county attorney's office for charge.
What were the other things that were burning that you asked?
I think, if my memory serves me correctly, I think it was just some miscellaneous items in brush on the scene there. But is that correct, Mr. Rager? So, obviously, the one piece of valuable equipment was the vehicle that had been burned. And they're working to trace the origin of that vehicle. Generally, in my experience, it's been if something like that happens to a vehicle, it's stolen, or something else nefarious is going on with that vehicle, that somebody wanted it burned. So. And then just one last piece of information I had for the council. The contract with the sheriff's office and the city of Nelland was for the 2021 law enforcement contract that was signed by the city, and now that's on its way through the county signing process. And I'll let, I'll get all the copies and everything to Lori as soon as that's done.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Council, anything for the... Commander?
Mr. Mayor. I do have a question on the Bar Nun. I think you probably answered it in regards with the detail on the female that got into the stolen car. So this change at Bar Nun, are they accepting male and female?
That's what I was going to ask.
I believe they'll be both. There was no differentiation, and most places that I've seen, when they do this, they have capacity, X amount of capacity for male and X amount of capacity for female. There, I, the only place that used to segregate was a couple of places up in Isanti, but otherwise everything else has been, and those are closed down, but I'm pretty sure that they will be together.
And to clarify, you said ages 12 to 17?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And just, and to clarify, the last meeting we had up there, they had decided not to mix genders anymore. And so each time we hear something, the program is different. They were starting a new program for six-to-12-year-olds, six-to-11-year-olds, and then the 12 to 17, males only and only through the court system, not the mental health, so...
And I...
It just changes dramatically, and it's... So it's time for, why don't we get a little more information on what they're anticipating currently? We need to have a meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'm as confused as you are sometimes with some of the conversations, because it hasn't been clear, like, this is our plan, this is what we're going to do. And if this is, even if you read through the email that was sent out, the, they talk about, they closed an area, they're closing another shelter in another place and bringing those staff and residents here. And it's, and the email also mentions that this is the path that they've been working on for 18 months. Well, I would say if we go back and think about what we've talked about for the last 18 months, we've been talking about some of the issues that are surrounding that, and I hope this isn't what they've come up with, is this is how we should operate on a regular basis.
Well, I would say what was in the emails, not what we've been talking about with them for 18 months, maybe somebody within their organization, but then the people we've been talking to aren't there anymore. But this example, you know, I mean, if we're going to be bringing people from other places and they're not going to regulate, so somebody can drive on the property, pick somebody up, and then put multiple agencies through the chase routine, knowing all we get is to get back to Minneapolis. They're not going to chase us anymore. It's something that we need to see what we can do with our staff, with our attorneys, and with the county staff, and with the sheriff's department, to be prevented. If they won't, what can we do? And if they will, how can we help them do that? Because that's just not acceptable, to put everybody through the process, chase you to the border, and you just get crazy and drop off. It's a lot of wasted time, energy, and risk, and inviting more of it doesn't make sense.
And for us, it's a, the biggest thing is a public safety concern for us. And second of all, then, the increase in what we've seen with some of the violence that's been perpetrated on staff, I don't, you know, it doesn't seem like that's all been addressed. So, I agree with you. I think there's more, there's more, there's more conversations to be had, but I think we need to get a clear direction on where they're going and what their plan is to run the program, at least on the city end.
Do you know if the sheriff is aware of the level of activity that we've been seeing?
He is. I keep him apprised of those type of things.
Because I, you know, I appreciated his public comment to the city of Minneapolis, if you're not going to take care of yourself, don't count on us. I think we need to have that same forcefulness that says, you just can't bring problems out to a city like ours and not monitor yourself and expect somehow we're going to try and maintain some kind of control, but then give up when public safety becomes an issue. Because they'll just push it with the level of public safety concern, and then everybody drops off. I just, I just want to make sure that he's involved in maybe one of our meetings, he might have to be the one that sits down with us as well.
Yes.
I mean, I know that's extreme, but...
Certainly, I...
We got to see much from the organization to say that their, the fruit of their efforts is taking anybody seriously.
Right. And have we, just as a point of information, have we gotten any firm follow-up on the use permits and stuff that they're operating?
Nobody can find anything. They're saying there's nothing, they can find it in their records, our township records. To my knowledge, Lori, we haven't found anything at this point. So, our attorneys at the time that that was all set up aren't with us anymore. Current attorneys have nothing. We found nothing in the township records, and they're claiming to have nothing. So, there's a use that's perpetuated, but nobody has any evidence that it's actually been approved. And so, that might take a few attorneys sitting together too, and saying, from a county standpoint, from a city standpoint, with no permit, what can we do?
Right. Okay. I think maybe we could have some more conversations about that.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Commander. All right, we have engineering and road improvement discussion. Previous workshop, we discussed the Ebony and Garnett road project. We've got some numbers from our engineering firm, and we asked the engineering firm to go back and review those numbers as to what might make sense from a standpoint of the city taking some of the burden of what should have been done when we were a township, and what might then be a normal overlay project in this neighborhood. We received those numbers. I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to take a look at those numbers, if they want to comment now, or...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
As we receive these on Saturday, I have some questions for the engineer. I'm in the process of typing them out. I will get them to Lori. But at this time, without having questions answered, I, there's, I'd like to delay this.
All right. Anybody else in the council? If you, having read through, those are, they're big numbers. Obviously, one of the things that we've asked Lori to do is take a look at, within our budget, depending on what came back in the engineer, where these might fit. So I think that obviously is a discussion we haven't had yet. But if the council has any other concerns, as Councilmember Rainville, put them in writing, please, and send them to Lori, and we'll collect all those, and we'll get the answers from the engineer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I think at this time, with the revised numbers, where the costs are broken out a little bit, it's worth continuing to research this project, and it kind of ties in with the next issue with the five-year plan, that this is also a potential role to bring back our next year's five-year plan, and I don't want to, at this time, I don't see any reason to not continue to pursue looking at the solution for Ebony and Garnett.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And Councilmember Brian, I didn't mean delay delay, I just still want to look at things, I have questions, and still have consults, haven't come back to consult.
We can still work out, work through this, have this information, and not say, nope, we're not going to be doing anything at all.
Correct.
I think the understanding was, let's look at the numbers and still meet with the residents yet this year. That's the council's understanding, so that we can have a discussion saying, what is reasonable and what timeframe is reasonable? Does this look like a project we're going to do in the immediate future or not? But I think we need to take a look at the numbers, get our questions answered, and still intend to do something with the residents. The discussion with the residents yet this year. All right? Anything else on that? So at this point, you would, motion to table?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to table.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Again, please get your questions, move the engineer into Lori. And Lori, obviously, will take a look at the budget from the treasury standpoint. Give us your opinion. All right? Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And everybody got the letters that went out for the current project that had begun for the two neighborhoods?
Aye.
All right? And then the five-year plan. At this point, I think what we're talking about is a motion to authorize the engineer to develop a five-year road plan, per our general discussion at the workshop. Direction to proceed with an estimate for that plan, and then to present a plan to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
So I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second.
So a motion to get a cost estimate and a draft of a five-year plan. Discussion of where Ebony and Garnett fits in that, would include that, and then Rogers Lake.
Right. And we, yeah, there's a, I guess you called a preliminary draft that was presented previously to council, but to continue to flesh out the details of that.
All right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Is this five-year plan projected to come to us next month?
Well, I drafted it.
Because I think it'd be valuable to know what the thoughts are about Rogers Lake before we make any decision on Ebony and Garnett.
Well, that was part of the estimate in the five-year plan.
The estimate, yeah.
Yeah. So I think the Rogers Lake area, as discussed with the engineer, would be to break out the neighborhood into a reasonable process. He was also going to check with...
Right.
Ramsey. So I think as part of the discussion of the five-year plan, that will incorporate what we can do with Ebony and Garnett, if anything.
Right.
What we can do with Rogers Lake.
Right.
And when.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I wondered.
Unless I miss something, council members, that's what I would have said, would be incorporated in the five-year plan.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we are on the same page.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would just say that these are two big projects, as far as monetarily, and I think we need to have good numbers, determine budget-wise what we have available, and what is reasonable for the city to cover. And once we get some of those questions answered by Shane, at least the questions I have, I'll be more comfortable making some decisions.
Yeah, we're not going to jump in without knowing where we're going, so...
Right.
Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, we have a motion to work with the engineer on the five-year plan, including an estimate to finalize that, that plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm planning and zoning, item A, the interim use permit for the commercial kitchen at 624 Old Viking. Based on the findings, or the stipulations provided by our city planner, I move to approve, move approval of the interim use permit to allow establishment of a home-based extended business at 624 Old Viking, located in a rural residential agricultural zoning district. I second it.
A motion to second. Mr. Bear, did you get the updated findings from the planner?
I did get the plan due, this document. I don't know if you ever heard it, do you guys?
We did get a copy of that electronically. She also made a couple of adjustments in the findings as far as surfacing of the parking area, the incorporation of the plantings. Did you get that update?
I haven't got it yet.
Do you have a copy of that here?
The updated one? It's not included, also, it doesn't have the stuff changes in it.
And then we will discuss and vote. In a case like that, Lori, could you make sure that Liz sends something to the council that she can copy the request for? Anybody else is interested in what the, is being read there, there's a copy in the back in our packet? Council standpoint, and anybody have any comments on the request?
Pretty clear. I don't think that the changes that we just were added amended, but this clarification.
Mr. Bear?
Yeah, I'll leave that.
Okay. So being that that is the understanding that was received by the applicant, and for a recommendation from the planner, we have a motion to second. Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Item B, the conditional use permit for the RRA District 83, 93, 181st Avenue. Based on the seven findings provided by our city planner, I move to deny the conditional use application for PID number 32, 33, 25, 43, 0001, requesting an establishment of a public utility building and storage of equipment in the RRA Rural Residential Agricultural Zoning District.
I have a motion to second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
In, I guess my questions originally have been, they're, um, do, uh, what am I trying to say, is that the the right fit for for a business in that area? And the question was, is is it the council's, are there any questions or legal precedents around that, and knowing that there wouldn't be a house put on that, put on that site? And and now I have even more questions about licensing and if the county does or doesn't have to weigh in on this? So I don't know if it's better to make sure from an attorney's perspective if there are more conditions that need to be done here, or although I, my preference would be to put this, put a business in the in the in the business district, I guess, I'm wondering if the Councilmember Rainville would would entertain a motion to table instead of deny to, until we can get these clarifications based on the new information that we have tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Brian, I just want to look at the date. So so it was received July, July 8th, so we do have time to do a 60-day extension without jeopardizing the the conditional use permit, having to automatically approve it without another extension. So I would be willing to to amend my motion to table this for 30, another 30 days until we can get the answers from the attorney and answers to the questions that were provided today.
All right. And since you're amending your motion, I will amend my second. So we have a motion at this point to table, get the attorney's opinion on the information we received tonight, and the information received from Cars Tree Service tonight, and our ordinance impact. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I kind of like Dan's idea where this be put in a commercial district instead of out in the country. Also weighing the feedback from the residents would influence my decision in that direction as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Greenberg, I I agree, but the findings of fact from the, from our city planner specifically says that the proposal, the proposed is inconsistent with the city's 2040 land use plan and policies as far as in a residential area, so to me, that's a valid reason not to have it there. To Councilmember Brian's comments of, we've now received some additional information that another governmental agency, maybe more than one, also needs to weigh in on this, that I think we need to do our due diligence. I don't know if that is something that the applicant knew about, if it's unique to Anoka County. I know he has locations in other parts of the state, but I don't know what their jurisdictions, what they, how they deal with it. So I think it's appropriate to delay it, get the answers to the questions from the attorney, look at the the additional information that was provided today, and then bring it back to the September 8th meeting for a decision.
I think, you know, I I think there's there's a question that had we reopened a public hearing tonight, there would be a question I think that Cars would have regarding the identification of the type of property that's required to be licensed here. So I think that there will be certainly opinions, additional opinions. I think I would like to say that Evan, whether we had shortcomings in our public hearing or not, that really is the opportunity for the residents to weigh in, and I think that what the chairman of that that commission is is looking to do is when the crickets start in the room, it's like, okay, everybody seems to be quiet, let's, let's move on. And so it really is the time for residents to speak their mind, and and if there's strong feelings, we try and say, somebody for it, somebody against it, somebody for it, somebody against it. And once we're getting repeat issues, then we, we stop. It's either when it goes, the room goes quiet, or the issues are being repeated. And and for whatever reason, it was, I anticipated a more robust discussion that night, but it got quiet pretty quick, and and so they they went to the vote. And so it is a situation where we maybe need to make sure, I mean, I thought it was pretty clear at the meeting, anybody else have any comments? You know, until somebody says, sit down, you've said that same thing three times, or somebody in the room said that same thing three times, we really do encourage at public hearings, actually public, you know, engagements at that point, so briefly, yes.
The experience that I had, that I was expecting, yes, was more so that if the public has concerns that it's planning and zoning, you would try to say, okay, this is what certain people, members of the public believe, here's what other certain members of the public believe, and Carers Tree Service, is there a thing that fits in the middle as far as accepting or or declining? Are there restrictions on piles that we can do to fit into addressing the concerns of of the residents? You know, noise, if there's restriction on certain days that pile can be grown or not grown, and if there's no restrictions on tractor, we can drive around on the field. So I guess that's what I was looking for, have experienced in plan, in planning and zoning meetings in the past, is more so that here's the issues, let's try to find some sort of resolution, and do we believe that Carers Tree Service is a utility, and therefore acceptable for the conditional use permit? Maybe that's what I would request too, then, is potentially another opportunity to address it in planning and zoning. Second public hearing.
That one, that one will have, the council have to decide on, I don't, right now we're looking at tabling this to get more understanding of what we were presented tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Evan's comments, when when I look at what the the findings and facts that Liz provided to planning and zoning, it was clear, I mean, I'm not a planning and zoning member, however, when I was, I looked at the the findings of facts, and if they stipulated clearly what could or couldn't occur there, whether I had additional questions or not, if it still didn't fit what was the land use, my additional questions were irrelevant. Yeah, mute, because if if it told, if the planner told us that it was not available or it was not appropriate use, then it's not an appropriate use. So I I can't speak for the other commission members.
There's also the approval side of it though, too, if you're reading off the denial option, there's also the approval option.
Right.
It is, it is different, and my experience with Liz has been more so, I want to be honest about it, the one time they have been discussing, is I've had a recognition that this is something that's viable, that we can do, and, you know, that's, that's what I have, we spent a lot of time on it, and the understanding that this is even as, really as two hours ago when I spoke with her, that she thought this was still something that was viable.
Can I maybe interject, please? I also talked to Liz a few hours ago, and she told me that she talked to the city attorney, and the city attorney said Carers Tree Service has every right to do this, the only issue was the brush piles.
What, Mr. Mayor?
That's from the city planner's office.
Mr. Mayor, we've, we've not, um, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
We've not received that information from our attorney, so until I receive that information in a, in a, in a, a ruling from my attorney, if there's questions, I would prefer to-
No.
-to delay it and get those questions answered, so.
Seeing and hearing nothing else. Clarify your motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I move that we table until the September 8th, 2020 city council meeting, the request for a conditional use permit at 83, 93, 181st Avenue Northwest, with the understanding that we need to get clarification from our attorney, and then have our 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 city planner look at the information that was provided today to determine whether or not those items stipulated in this email, these 18 items are also required, and then if they are, that Anoka County needs to be brought into it, or what is their plan?
All right, understanding that motion, my second stands. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Member Brian.
I would like to make a motion to approve the zoning map update related to the 2040 land use plan.
I second that.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Meeting is adjourned.